Okay. The regular meeting of the Kansas City Public Schools Board of Directors for April 27th, 2022 is called to order. June, please call the roll.
Mr. Abarka?
Present.
Ms. Buckner?
Here.
Ms. Cortez?
Here.
Ms. Ford?
Here.
Mr. Hogan? Dr. Jones?
Present.
Ms. Wolfsey?
Present. Mr. Hogan has requested to be excused. Are there any objections to his absence? Seeing none? Okay, are there any proposed changes to the agenda? Also seeing none? Proved by acclamation. Next, we are moving on to a review of the old action and task items. June, could you let us know about any outstanding action items? Or actually review the ones from last, last time?
There is one outstanding item that was included in the presentation on April 13th, was the Naviance. And that will be discussed with the board when that presentation is rescheduled.
Great, thank you. Okay. As we move into our public comment portion of the agenda, we realize the importance of community. Hold on. One second, I want to make sure I get this right. Okay. As we move into the public comment portion of the agenda, we realize the importance of community having the opportunity to share thoughts with us. Before we welcome our public comments this evening, we'd like to have a moment of silence to acknowledge the tragic loss of life that happened two weeks ago at Northeast Middle School. We hope tonight is a time to continue working through this challenge together. Let's please take a moment of silence before we begin tonight. Thank you. Tonight, as we proceed with our published business agenda, we now welcome public comment. As we work together as a board, administration, teachers, staff, students, and families, it's important we hear from you. Public comment has value. We want to reiterate that we listen, we hear you, and your thoughts are invaluable to us. While we don't address public comments directly during the meetings, we do take comments into consideration in our decision-making. And as a reminder for the evening, each speaker is limited to three minutes. Speakers may provide written information to support their commentary. And comments must be acceptable for a business and family-friendly environment. No inappropriate language, gestures, or personal attacks will be tolerated. I believe tonight we have two, as I believe, right? Individuals who have indicated they wish to address the board this evening. Thank you for being with us. The first is Mr. Melvin Brown, who I see. Please come to the podium, Mr. Brown. Great to see you.
Likewise.
Mr. Brown, your time begins now.
In the absence of Chairman Hogan, Superintendent Bedell, and all of our distinguished board members and leadership staff, I'm so happy to be back with KCPS. I did declare that I said someone was going to snatch me up when I was here in June, and true enough, that is exactly what happened. My purpose for standing before you this evening is to solicit your consideration in making my position, the parent and community involvement person, a salary position. Years ago, when I first started with KCPS, there was devastation because I was notified after months into the summer that my position is not paid during that time. Though I apply each year, there is no guarantee that I will be accepted into summer school or the fact that unemployment benefits are denied because, according to the state of Missouri, I am deemed to return to the district in the fall. By changing this position to salary gives employees stability of earning 24 pay periods instead of 12 during the academic year and gives financial predictability for the employer. In order to gain emotional stability and become more impactful with our stakeholders, our schools, and our community, this position should be extended to a 12-month. Parent and community liaisons should be 12-month salary only because, one, they support the building with the opening and closing of the school year; two, they provide community resources and communicating to our stakeholders what they need to know about the start and the end of the school year; three, to be able to build relationships with our stakeholders and school and the community beyond the limitations of the academic year. Additionally, utilization of the year liberates the constraints from an academic year to a more business-friendly approach of the calendar year. This allows freedom to, for the parent liaison to have more flexibility to adjust to the fiscal calendar for donors and academic calendar for schools. Going forward, let us continue to create our own narrative as pioneers in education and value the essential staff members as we have. And I certainly appreciate you giving your listening ear on tonight. Thank you.
Madam Chair, can I just acknowledge his purple is consistent?
Representing the Northeast Vikings. Thank you, Mr. Brown. Now, Mr. Jason Robertson, I do believe I, there you are. Thank you, Mr. Roberts. I'll let you get situated, and then we'll, your time begins now.
The events that occurred a few weeks ago at Northeast Middle School are tragic, heartbreaking, and traumatic for so many people involved. For those who were direct witnesses, who knew those who were involved as teachers and parents, and of course, their families and friends, these events may never be forgotten. KCPS has been fortunate that in a country plagued by school violence since Columbine in 1999, we have gone fairly unscathed. However, with tragedy comes response, and that's what I want to focus on. No response from any district can or would be seen by every person as perfect. However, I was at Northeast Middle after these events, and I can speak directly to what I witnessed. I witnessed Dr. Collier with Major Harris planning the best way to get students out of the building. I witnessed Jordan Gordon assisting with food service, ensuring everything was in place so we can provide meals to students as they leave, even though that's not his division anymore. I listened as Dr. Bedell addressed the staff after the student dismissal with the compassion of a father. I watched as Kelly Waichel ensured that students were not being lured into interviews by the media. I watched as our staff walked students out of the building class by class in silence as they went to their parents or to their buses. And to talk about staff, even when they had the opportunity to take a PTO day without penalty the next day, 100% of Northeast staff reported to work. They were there to support our students and each other. Barry Bocchicora from Lincoln Middle sent breakfast in solidarity, and staff from the BOE were there to assist with substitution if needed. Our students, or excuse me, our teachers and our staff at Northeast Middle held that place together in the following days, and they continued to do that. It was even commented how nice it was to see Mr. Shriver, Dr. Bedell, and myself walk into the staff meeting together, unified in support of our district. I've offered whatever resources necessary to support the work of healing at Northeast Middle. But what I can say with certainty to this board is the staff sitting in front of you rose to the occasion, and the staff enjoying an evening in their homes from the school showed the unbridled strength of this district's employee membership. I will close with a quote that I tweeted a few days after that Tuesday, and to anyone out there who is listening, please hear me. I believe in Northeast Middle School. I believe in Kansas City Public Schools, and you should too.
Thank you, Mr. Roberts. Thank you, everybody, for your words this evening. Like I said before, we hear you, and we are here to listen always. This evening's meeting is actually intended to continue working through these topics in the process of healing as a community. Your voices are important, and we appreciate your willingness to share your thoughts with us. With this, I'm not seeing any more. Our DAC chair, and I'm not sure that Angie Lyle is here tonight. Do we have anyone from DAC? Okay, thank you. So we do not have a district advisory council report tonight. So, Dr. Bedell, I believe that brings us to the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just to get us started here, this evening, we have adjusted our agenda to reflect an approach that continues the process of addressing and working through the tragedy that occurred at Northeast Middle School. With the death of our student, we have been working through many emotions and processes, both internally and externally. In a lot of ways, I still don't have the words to talk about what happened, but I do understand that for us to heal, we have to begin to have more dialogue around our schools, our systems, our responses, our supports, and resources. Tonight, we will share information about our supports for staff, families, students, and the community. We will talk about resources available for our community and how we've helped support our students and staff at Northeast Middle School since this tragedy. We will talk about our processes and systems as much as we can tonight also. We offer this evening's meeting topic to move forward with empathy and sensitivity. This is difficult, but it's necessary. Thank you for joining us in person and virtually for those online. We also have some media outlets here to listen. We hope this provides a space for information and for healing.
Thank you, Dr. Bedell. I couldn't agree more. I will give the board a chance to respond to what Dr. Bedell said. Don't, you know, feel obligated. I know that we have a statement we'd like to share as a board a little bit later on, but I didn't want to miss the opportunity if anybody wanted to say something. Dr. Jones?
Good evening. To our community, I want to, first of all, just as has been done earlier, acknowledge the pain that so many people in our community are dealing with after this tragedy. And I also want to applaud the folks who continue to show up for our kids in our community every day despite what has happened, so thank you for that. I also want to take this opportunity just to briefly remind all of us that people, not everyone is well right now. And as community members, as neighbors, as friends, partners, it would be great for us all to share the burden with each other and take on responsibility for what we're seeing in our neighborhoods. Not things that don't always start in the school, but that most of things begin in the community. You know, we know that if the surrounding neighborhood, if things are broken or things are missing, we know that we will see the impact in all of our institutions. And so I would just encourage, you know, if there are bus stops or parks or, you know, school bus stops in your area, let's bound and bond together as neighbors and watch over those spaces. Let's take ownership for the spaces around us. Where there is, you know, disarray or housing or property that's not taken care of, it's within all of our right to complain and be heard and advocate for not just ourselves and our own homes, but for those people around us and for the kids who have to walk by it and see it and deal with it. We are their voices, and so, as they said earlier, there's, it's hard to describe in words how we feel after the tragedy, but I do want us to just remind each other, you know, that we all share, we all have a role in making sure that our neighborhoods and our communities are safer.
Thank you. Manny, Mr. Abarka?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I, the words that you've used, I think, are so critically important. As the third sub-district representative where Northeast Middle resides, I have most certainly leaned in to try and support Dr. Bedell any way we can and the administration and take guidance from our folks in support as a community leader elected to serve that area. And, and it will be unrelenting continuously, as, as it has been, I think, since I've joined the board. The reality, as Dr. Jones had said, we all have responsibility and accountability to each other, to our, our children. As a board of a majority of parents, we all have vested interest in the, the success of this district and to provide the safety at the level that we all expect as parents and as, as consumers of the district. So know that, as our president of AFT had said, we are all here, we're not, we're not leaving, we're not changing. The realities of, of what's going on in this district is our responsibility, and we take that seriously. So it most certainly is an opportunity for us to step in a void, to address community violence as we see fit in all of our roles throughout the community and in these spaces as your leaders of this district.
Thank you. Ms. Cortez?
So, I think as humans, we fill silence with our fears. And so often, it's necessary to allow one person to speak for many of us because it ensures that the community hears what we all intend. We are all people who come to this role with great compassion and appreciation for the individuals who work every day to make sure that our kids have the best opportunity for an education and progression in life. So the loss of a student strikes at the heart of every single human who commits themselves to education, whether they work for the district, whether they are volunteers for the district. And I would just encourage each of us across the community to think about having compassion even in the hardest moments, because this really is about community and how we, how we come together as community or we break apart. And I believe from the things that I have seen in the past few weeks, that we have the capacity to continue to come together, and I appreciate what each of you have done, our students, our teachers, our administrators. You have given us all hope that we can continue to do the work and do it well. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else? We are committed as a board to transparency and sharing with our community. This means we want to share what we're currently doing in our schools so we can better understand how to move forward. I'd like to invite Dr. Woodley, our Assistant Superintendent of Student Support Services and Intervention, to the podium for this next part of the agenda. Dr. Woodley will be sharing some information about our responses and supports in place in schools as we've been working through these last two weeks. Dr. Woodley?
Good afternoon, Dr. Bedell, Vice Chairman Wolfsey, and members of the board. As you know, our school district has been deeply affected by the loss of our student. Because of the significant impact that has been on our Northeast school community, our care team was mobilized for the last two weeks to support our students and staff at Northeast Middle School. We have been working with our community partners to provide ongoing support for students that need long-term supports as a result of their social and emotional needs. We've worked with our, our employee assistance program as well as our benefits providers to be able to provide ongoing supports for our staff. Additionally, we're working to enhance our less-talk platform as a means for our families and communities and our students to be able to engage in conversations with us on social and emotional needs that are present as well as safety concerns. Keeping KCPS safe is our ultimate goal and our ultimate commitment to the students and the families that we serve as well as our staff. So currently, what we're doing is consulting with the firm to do an overall audit of our safety and security protocols district-wide. We're working with the specialists to determine if there's some technological resources or products that we can use to enhance our safety protocols. We're partnering with the School Board Association Educational Safety Center on a review of our emergency preparedness plan, and we're partnering with KCPD on opportunities to support us in addition to the SROs that support us in our high schools, different opportunities to support us in middle schools as well. We're committed to this work and making sure that the well-being of our students and our staff is our utmost priority. Do you have any questions for me at this time?
Thank you, Dr. Woodley. So I'll open it up for questions. Mr. Abarka?
Dr. Woodley, thank you for the presentation. How can we support funding for more robust conflict resolution and emotional support programs in our schools? I think this is something we've taken the lead on for many years as a district, but it seems like now, in the wake of the pandemic, we have more opportunity for us to, to create a more robust system.
Yes, so first of all, I just want to thank the school board. You guys have been very supportive of the work that we're trying to do. Our ultimate goal is to become a model trauma-informed school district. We have been leading the way in this work and rolling this work out. Post-pandemic, we have seen an increased level of social and emotional needs for our students. And so we are going to be needing additional funding for some support resources as we see those supports that are escalated in our school district. So yes, we'll be asking for more supports once we're able to complete our audits of the different things that we are needing, and we'll be bringing that ask within the next 30 days.
Sure, Ms. Cortez?
So, Dr. Woodley, and I know that this was part of what you were going to talk about as recently as a few weeks ago, so could you just refresh for, for us and for our community kind of how we engage with the Center for Conflict Resolution and the Restorative Justice Program?
Yes, so we have a robust program with Center for Conflict Resolutions, and we have, like I said, we have a five-year strategic plan for this work. One of the components is for all of our staff to be trained on understanding trauma and how to support students. And so our goal is for 100% of our, our teachers and our support personnel that engage with students to be trained, and that program is ran through the Center for Conflict Resolutions. So we have a partnership with them to provide training for our staff. Additionally, we have rolled out our Restorative Justice Program in multiple schools throughout our district, and with the ultimate goal for it to be a district-wide supports. And the Center for Conflict Resolutions provide the training for our Restorative Justice coordinators as well as their work that we're going to be doing with students. One of the components of this work, of our partnership, is for them to actually do training directly with our students on understanding conflict, anger management, how to deal with conflict and things of that nature. So we have a youth component that goes along with this work that's a part of the strategic plan. So this is an ongoing partnership, like I said, that we've been working with them on that's a part of our five-year strategic plan.
I was just going to ask, I kind of have a personal connection to a student, because I am a mom, and I know what it's been like in our family with the impact of COVID and two years of being kind of isolated and what, but could you talk a little bit about the impact that that has had on our students just from a, not necessarily academic, but social, emotional eyes?
Yes, so all indicators, we're seeing increased anxiety, increased depression, you know, our students were socially isolated for almost two years, and so them being able to reconnect and learn how to really just be in the same space with others and being able to engage. So we've seen a heightened level of conflict within our buildings. And so then on top of that, I'm thinking about the students that were engaged in situations that they may have been experiencing some type of abuse and things of that nature that we wasn't able to respond to. And so we're dealing with a lot, you know, our babies are dealing with a lot as they begin to re-enter into, into our schools, and so we're seeing a heightened level of response. When we look at our, our data on the number of students that were reporting suicide thoughts and things of that nature, we're seeing an increase in that area, students that have presented with sexual abuse cases, all of those things have been trending in the, in, up in a higher proportion than we've never seen in this school district in the last few years. Dr. Woodley, one of the things that had kind of made the media rounds a few, several months ago was just how many children, particularly children of color, who had lost a caregiver due to the pandemic and, you know, or caregivers shifted around or what have you, or they entered the system, you know? Do you have any insight on what that might look like here at KCPS? Yes, we, of course, our students and transition numbers during the pandemic, we saw a lot of families moving and being displaced as a result of the pandemic due to changes within the family structure. And yes, we've seen a lot of caregivers having to, to change as a result of the loss of a, of a caregiver during this time as well.
It's a question, I guess, for both Dr. Bedell and Dr. Woodley. It's clear there's a call to action, obviously, but as a school district, there, there are limitations that I think we can have as a school district, right? I mean, part of this is academic more than the social, emotional. If there is a call to action here for others beyond us, what would that be?
That's a great question to bring up, Mr. Abarka. It's one of the things that I have been, I guess, talking about since I've arrived here in 2016. This call out that we have to do better as a community as a whole to hold the school district accountable, but not only holding the school district accountable, to hold each other accountable. I have an article up in my office from 2018, and it was a cry-out back then about the number of, the, the number of students and the amount of violence that's happening in our city. And you can't just put this, just, it can't be insular in how you deal with it. KCPS has to deal with it this way, KCPD has to deal with it that way, the mayor's office is going to do something this way, the county executive is going to do something that way. We have to come together as a community, and I've said this for a while, like, there's something wrong when we have the number of murders that are happening overall in our community. That incident that occurred that day also was coupled with four other murders, three of them on that same side of town. And, and I guess for me, what I'm asking for, like, I can't do this as a superintendent by myself, neither can this board or this administration or the faculty and staff. Like, we got to have the whole community galvanized to say, enough is enough. We have to have safe havens in this city. And until we all are able to get together and not be reactionary to tragedy, I don't, I don't know what more can be done until we all get together. So for me, Mr. Abarka, the call to action is that the city, the county, the prosecutor's office, the police department, the school district, community organizations, we all have to get together and we all have to wrap our arms around this community, and we have to say, this is what we will no longer tolerate as a city. And that's really my cry-out for help, because if it doesn't happen, if it doesn't get any better, and I've shared this with our board, it will impact quality human capital here in this school district. And I'm talking about teachers, support staff like Melvin, officers, building principals. We have to stop this. Forty-seven, that's where we're at? That's what I heard as of last night. Forty-seven murders? Enough is enough. Enough is enough.
Thank you, Dr. Bedell. This is where leaders stand up and leaders step into the void. And so I think we 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 might have to be that organization that convenes and asks and puts out the call. The question is, who will come to the table to join us? I'm looking around at my board colleagues to see if you have any other questions? Okay, I'll let you go ahead.
Thank you, Dr. Woodley, for your work and to our team. Thank you all for everything you've been doing. You heard our reunion president. We are all working together to do everything in our power to be preventative to the best of our ability. And I just want to thank everybody, everybody who's come together. He mentioned several groups, I'll tell you. North Kansas City Public Schools was, they fed our staff, their education foundation, center, school district, sent flowers. Every school district called to ask how could they help? And I I think that there is a sense of brotherhood and sisterhood that exists amongst the number of school districts that surround us. And it gives me a sense that we're all in this together. And if we talk about this call to action, I also think that that will be a call that I will have for my colleagues in these other school districts also to help us, you know, as we continue to make Kansas City region the best region for all that that lives within these boundaries. I also wanted to just do a quick introduction before we move it over to the board's report. We have Mr. Yulesis Vasquez, and he is our new chief technology officer. He comes here from Osceola County outside of Orlando. And we're excited to have you onboard. Welcome to Team KCPS. And I don't know if there's, you know, if you want to offer any remarks, you don't have to. I don't want to put you on the spot, but welcome. That concludes my report, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Dr. Bedell. We'll put you on the spot later, Mr. Vasquez. No, no worry there. At this time, I believe we're moving on to the Board of Directors' report. We have asked Mr. Abarka, Sub District Three Board Member and resident of Northeast Community, to read a statement on behalf of us. Unfortunately, Board Chair Nate Hogan is unable to be with us this evening. He's currently out of the country, but he also wanted to send his thoughts and support. So, Mr. Abarka?
Thank you, Madam Chair and colleagues. First and foremost, the safety and security of our students, staff, and community is our utmost priority. The Kansas City Public School Board is wholly committed, working with the superintendent, to do all we can to ensure our schools are safe and caring places. The tragic situation at Northeast Middle has rocked our school community to its core. As a board, as caring people, and as parents, we mourn the loss of a student and other lives irrevocably altered by violence. We feel this tragedy has called into even greater focus the importance of strengthening our relationships with students, parents, staff, and community. The board will continue its commitment to listen and review policies to ensure that our relationships are responsive to the communities we've been elected to serve. We desire for KCPS to be a like, to be like a home away from home. Where safe and engaging communities, atmosphere is the norm and student growth and progress thrive. Our trauma-informed care models equip students and staff with the necessary tools to address the impacts that trauma creates in our communities and our classrooms. However, KCPS cannot do it alone, and we ask our broader community to lean in during this time to assist us in finding collective approaches to reducing the potential for violence in and outside of our schools. This is a call to action to work together to help change the behaviors and culture within our city and to focus on a conversation and dialogue of support, kindness, and tolerance instead of violence. It is our intention to provide transparency and communication as we allow the investigation to continue while providing the most up-to-date information we can share. As a governing board, our responsibility is to our students, staff, and community. And we believe the true intention of knowledge is to perpetually learn and grow. In that spirit, we welcome open dialogue and discussion on ways to improve our system.
Thank you, Manny. Okay, the next part of the Board of Directors' report is ad hoc committee reports. I believe, Cortez, do you have a finance committee report?
I have a brief report. The Finance Committee met last week. And while most of our discussion focused on the progression of the budget process and our intention to engage the public with our formal public meeting next month and keep the process on track, subject to whatever gets finalized in Jeff City this year, right, which always presents some challenges or opportunities. But the one thing I wanted to note in the, coming out of the Finance Committee meeting in tonight's consent agenda, there is a contract for depository services. Ms. Quinley and her team walked us through the vetting process for that contract and provided, I think, sound and ample support for the depository contract that you see on the consent agenda to renew the relationship with our existing bank. So that's what I wanted to share.
Thank you for that update. Go ahead.
I think this is more of a reminder, I think, for the budget hearing that's coming up. Can we give that date out for the public to make sure folks know that they can come and give us ideas, suggestions as to what priorities we should fund?
May 11th at 6:00 PM.
Okay. Do you have the information for the CCE on the neighborhood? Not yet, okay.
Okay. All right, we are set to have a Communications and Community Engagement Committee meeting on Thursday, the 28th. During this meeting, the idea was to ask neighborhood associations their perceptions around engagement with Blueprint 2030 and hopes and fears that they may have regarding Blueprint 2030. As of right now, we do not have, I'm sorry, we have two neighborhood associations signed up for Thursday. And June, can you share who, which neighborhood associations?
Okay, I'm sorry to put you on the spot. And that's it, thank you.
Thank you very much. I will go ahead and give a brief Government Relations Committee update. We did not meet last two weeks ago. But there is a lot going on in Jefferson City as we get to the end of the legislative session, which is, I have it written down, May 13th. Can't come fast enough sometimes. The budget has to be approved by May 6th. And so right now, going on, the, I believe, there are some interesting things as it relates to the budget. It has not made its way to the governor's desk yet, but there is, the Senate has put in almost $214 million of new money for transportation, which is pretty significant. And I'll ask some questions during the Treasurers Report about that, about how that would impact us, but if it were to make it all the way through. Also, there is an increase for a minimum teacher salary as well as, I believe, the, what are they talking about? The career ladder dollars as well, I think of about, I don't remember if that was 20 million, oh, 37.4 million, sorry. Open enrollment at this point does not appear to be moving very far, but charter funding did make it across both houses, but there's still some perfection yet to be done. So, you know, with time, the limited amount of time that's left and the fact that the budget absolutely must be done, it really is kind of watch and see at this point to see if charter funding makes it across the finish line. I would also encourage anybody that is interested in legislative affairs, you're always welcome at a Government Relations Committee meeting. And our next one is Tuesday, May 3rd. That is the Government Relations Report. I believe, Board Treasurer, you're up next.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'll let us get there. All right. So just to give everyone a heads up, as we look at our slides here today, mostly, the next few, we are at 75% of the way through the fiscal year as of this report for March 31st. So keep in mind, on the side, you'll see a percentage. It should somewhat align with that percentage of through the year. So looking at our beginning fund balance, revenues, expenditures, you can see the total amounts here for our fund balances. Transitioning to our next slide, local revenues. Local revenue is at 95.8% due to the timing of collection of property taxes and some lines that have come in above budgets such as M&amp;M surtax, local railroad and utilities, and M&amp;M replacement back taxes. Don't worry, those revenues, I'm sure, will get expensed down through our upcoming expenditures. So as we challenge, as we go through some of these, just monitoring the right-hand side, you'll remember we have areas where we bring in more during our revenue side. Now, we invest later as we spend down those revenues that we have coming in. So looking at our total revenues here, obviously, we have a lot of COVID dollars that have come in, 29 million from SIR 2. But just looking at our total revenues is at 83.5 a budget as of March 31st. Looking at our revenues pie chart, you'll see the line share is still, obviously, local revenues coming in. But you'll see our federal pie piece there has grown quite substantially because of the SIR dollars that have come in, thanks to the Biden administration and those subsequently supporting that. As you look at our expenditures, salary and benefits are just over 60%, slightly below budget for the year. They trail by a month due to the timing of our payroll compared to the time worked. As we navigate through some of these as well, we've got a line, looks like, that's somewhat mixed up there. But purchase services is also trailing budget here at 49.6%, partially due to unavailable resources and some underspending. As we navigate to our expenditures pie chart, you'll just see again, on the right-hand side, we should be conforming to around 75%. Our expenditures pie chart, salary and benefits are 63% of our total budget, so we're tracking appropriately to some degree here. Looking at our rolling investments, we are making these investments now as we are cash-rich so that when we are cash-poor, we can sustain our overall cash flow. And I believe that is the conclusion of my report.
Any questions? Seeing none, I have one, bringing back up transportation. So it's not necessarily related to the Treasurers Report, but since you're here, Ms. Quinley, what impact would $214 million budget increase to transportation have for us?
So what the current, as the budget sits today in Jefferson City, they are fully funding transportation, which means funding 75% of your cost. So fully funding is not 100%, but it meets the statutory expectation of 75%. Be the first time since both Ms. Thompson and I have been in the industry that that would have actually occurred, if it does occur. For Kansas City Public Schools of that $214 million, it would mean an additional $6 to $7 million of transportation revenues next year.
And just so that those watching or listening understand, if that money was not coming in for our transportation costs, where does that money come out of?
We fund 81% every year of our transportation costs with our local tax dollars.
So essentially also coming straight out of a classroom?
Correct.
Thank you. What was that?
Yeah.
Everybody call your, yeah. So I think that's it. I see no more questions? All right, moving on, we actually have a resolution to adopt a new policy, a new set of policies, actually, adopt and update a set of policies. Dr. Bedell, I would like to recognize you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The administration is requesting the board to adopt or adopt or update policies to Board Policy Appendix D-E-B-B-C, lactation support, Policy G-B-B-D, staff leaves, Policy J-G-A, corporal punishment, and G, I mean, and J-G-G-A, seclusion and restraint.
Thank you. Do I hear a motion?
Some of.
Second.
Thank you. It's been moved in second to adopt Board Policies Appendix D-E-E-B-C, G-B-B-D, J-G-A, and J-G-G-A. Is there any debate on this motion? Seeing none, June, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Abarka?
Yes.
Ms. Buckner?
Yes.
Ms. Cortez?
Yes.
Ms. Ford?
Yes.
Dr. Jones?
Yes.
Ms. Wolfsee?
Yes, the motion passes and the policies are adopted. Dr. Bedell, I would like to recognize you for our regular business items.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Item number one is Primetime Contracting Corp. The administration recommends approval of the contract with Primetime Contracting for $302,188.10 for paving of the Franklin Operations Center. This contract will be funded by the current capital project fund budget and is 38.3% MBE.
Thank you. Do I have a motion?
Some of.
Second.
Hearing, move in second. June, will you please, oh, any debate on the motion? Seeing none, June, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Abarka?
Yes.
Ms. Buckner?
Yes.
Ms. Cortez?
Yes.
Ms. Ford?
Yes.
Dr. Jones?
Yes.
Ms. Wolfsee?
Yes. Oh, the motion passes.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Item number two, Integrity Energy Partners. In the amount of 5,300, the administration recommends approval of the First Amendment to the Integrity Energy Partners contract to add 5,300 for support in meeting the Energy Star Portfolio Manager Documentation and Reporting Requirements. The expense will be funded by the SIR 2 operating budget.
Thank you. Do we have a motion?
Some of.
A hair is second. Thank you. It's been moved in second to approve Amendment One with Integrity Energy Partners LLC. Any debate on the motion? Seeing none, June, please call the roll.
Mr. Abarka?
Yes.
Ms. Buckner?
Yes.
Ms. Cortez?
Yes.
Ms. Ford?
Yes.
Dr. Jones?
Yes.
Ms. Wolfsee?
Whoop, yes. The motion passes.
Item number three, Pure Ozone Incorporated. The administration recommends approval of a contract for $351,499.70 with Pure Ozone for the purchase of air purifiers and custodial cleaning equipment. The funds will be provided from the current capital projects fund budget.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
Some of.
Second.
It's been moved in second to approve the Pure Ozone Inc. contract. Do I see any debate on the motion, hearing any debate? Seeing none, June, please call the roll.
Mr. Abarka?
Yes.
Ms. Buckner?
Yes.
Ms. Cortez?
Yes.
Ms. Ford?
Yes.
Dr. Jones?
Yes.
Ms. Wolfsee?
Yes, the motion passes.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Item number four is AIG Specialty Insurance Company, which focuses on cyber liability coverage. The administration requests approval of the renewal of the cyber liability insurance coverage with AIG Specialty Insurance Company. The premium of $46,097 comes with a 33% premium increase due to industry trends and will be funded by the risk management operating budget.
Thank you. Do we have a motion?
Some of.
Second.
Thank you. It has been moved in second to approve the placement of cyber liability with insurance with AIG. Is there any debate on the motion? Hearing none, June, please call the roll.
Mr. Abarka?
Yes.
Ms. Buckner?
Yes.
Ms. Cortez?
Yes.
Ms. Ford?
Yes.
Dr. Jones?
Yes.
Ms. Wolfsee?
Yes. Sorry, the motion passes.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Item number five, HVAC Maintenance and Uncalled Repair Services. Okay, in the amount of $240,000. The administration recommends approval of the Okay, in the amount of $240,000. The administration recommends approval of the First Amendment to our two HVAC, heating, ventilation, and air conditioning uncall and repair contracts to increase each by $165,000 to a total of $240,000 each for continued response to our Integrity Energy Partner Discovery. Hope I did that right. Okay, the two contracts with EMCOR Fagan and Lippert Mechanical are funded by the SRT2 capital project and operating budgets. Okay, thank you.
You got it right. Thanks, Dr. Bedell. Do we have a motion?
Some of.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded to approve Amendment One to HVAC Maintenance and Uncall Repair Services with EMCOR Fagan and Lippert Mechanical. Is there any debate on the motion? Seeing none, June, please call the roll.
Mr. Abarka?
Yes.
Ms. Buckner?
Yes.
Ms. Cortez?
Yes.
Ms. Ford?
Yes.
Dr. Jones?
Yes.
Ms. Wolfsee?
Yes. The motion passes.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Item number six is Asphalt and Concrete Summer Projects. The administration recommends approval of two contracts to support summer asphalt, asphalt and concrete projects totaling $853,065. The contracts with Barclay Asphalt Company for $732,350, and Phillips Paving for $120,715, bring 2% MBE participation, and will be funded by the capital projects fund.
Thank you, Dr. Bedell. Do I hear a motion?
Some of.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the multiple, oh, multiple-site pavings and asphalt services with Barclay Asphalt Company and Phillips Paving Company. Any debate on this motion? Seeing none, June, please call the roll.
Mr. Abarka?
Yes.
Ms. Buckner?
Yes.
Ms. Cortez?
Yes.
Ms. Ford?
Yes.
Dr. Jones?
Yes.
Ms. Wolfsee?
Yeah. Yes. The motion passes.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And the final business item is on roof replacement and miscellaneous roof repairs. The administration recommends approval of the annual roofing repair and replacement contracts at multiple sites. The contracts with Compass Roofing for $201,087, and Delta Innovative for $126,645, bring 68% MBE participation, and will be funded by the capital project fund budgets.
Thank you. Do we have a motion?
Some of.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the roof replacement and repairs at multiple sites with Compass Roofing and Delta Innovative. Is there any debate on this motion? Seeing none, June, please call the roll.
Mr. Abarka?
Yes.
Ms. Buckner?
Yes.
Ms. Cortez?
Yes.
Ms. Ford?
Yes.
Dr. Jones?
Yes.
Ms. Wolfsee?
Yes. The motion passes. All right, we're moving on to consent items. Do I have a motion to approve the items on the consent agenda?
Some of.
Second.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded to approve the items on the consent agenda. June, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Abarka?
Yes.
Ms. Buckner?
Yes.
Ms. Cortez?
Yes.
Ms. Ford?
Yes.
Dr. Jones?
Yes.
Ms. Wolfsee?
Yes. The motion passes. June, I know you're finishing up, but do we have any outstanding action items from the meeting?
We have none today.
I, I didn't hear any. I'm looking up and down. Okay. Manny, okay. All right. You have one more. Oh, we, thank you, Rita. You were given one thing to be in charge of, and you did it extremely well. It is Administrative Professionals Day, and we would like to take this opportunity to recognize our wonderful Board Secretary, Ms. June Kolkmeier. She, and I think I said this maybe in years past, but it's like herding cats with us, and we would not be as effective at what we do if it were not for her. And so, we would just like to recognize you, and we have something for you. So, everybody knows how well she's loved. We, some lovely flowers and a, and a day out for lunch. So, thank you for everything you do. We really do appreciate you. And I'll, you know, if anybody else wants to say anything, feel free. All right. This brings us to the conclusion of our agenda this evening. So, if there's no objection, we will adjourn. The next meeting will be May 11th, 2022.